Front wheel becomes a driver's.
Yep, yep. Oh, it worked great.
Works great.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Muscatine City Council meeting for June 2nd, 2016. Fran, will you please do the roll call?
Council members, Ray Walt.
Present.
It's Gerald.
Present.
Nat Fig.
Present.
And Pedro.
Present.
Finum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Fred. Six present and one absent, your honor.
Thank you, Fran. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Is there anyone here who would like to address council about a topic that's not already on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll move along on the agenda to 5A, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes items 6A, items 8A through F, items 12A through B, and tonight's bills totaling $7,090,721.27?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second, your honor.
Phil? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries with all ayes. Moving down to 11A on the agenda. Presented for city council's consideration is the final reading of an ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter 5 of the city code pertaining to automated traffic enforcement. The revision is intended to remove any doubt as to whether the city ordinance allows mobile speed enforcement and also includes the addition of a speed category to be used while conducting speed enforcement in school and construction zones. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading as submitted and direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved.
Thank you, Alan. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob? Any discussion? Hearing none. Phil, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. The ordinance is adopted with all ayes. 11B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting completed work for the airport electrical system project and authorizing final payment. This project has been completed and is ready for final acceptance by the city. It is staff's recommendation, city council take action to accept the work and authorize final payment to Voltimer Incorporated. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second, your honor.
Phil? Any discussion? Hearing none. Phil, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the Mulberry Avenue Improvement Project. At its May 19th, 2016 meeting, city council awarded the contract for this project to Langman Construction in the amount of $1,888,269.94. It is now necessary to approve the contract and bond for the project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Alan? Any discussion?
One quick question. Once this is approved, how long do you think it'd take for work to commence? And assuming no bad weather, what's kind of the timeline?
The answer to that first question is absolutely as quick as we possibly can to get going. We're hoping no later than another couple of weeks. Now, that is dependent upon a process, and I appreciate the mayor and council giving me the opportunity to come up here because I kind of have a request to go along with that schedule. If you vote to approve this, I know it's probably only maybe a matter of a couple of days, but the absolute quickest, the quicker we can get a signature on that document, that contract, and get it shipped back to the DOT, I mean, that's exactly equivalent to the number of days we can get going, give a notice to proceed to that contractor to get going quicker. So, I guess my request would be is if we could get the signature on that contract just as quick as possible so that we can get that shipped off to the DOT because they didn't have to sign it and ship the signed documents back to us, and then we can schedule a pre-con and have the pre-con and get moving. But there is some deadlines in that contract, built into that contract, that are the intersection at Hauser and Mulberry need to be done before school gets back in session again. So, I mean, every day we can save, I want to save it. I want to give the contractor every chance to be successful there. What was the last part of your question? I forgot.
Assuming the weather's okay, what timeframe are we looking at for completion?
They kind of shorted them on contract days, the DOT did. I see completion of that this fall. I see seating and final grading and stuff like that next spring.
Sort of like Colorado was, you know?
Very much so. Not quite as drawn out as Colorado was, but very much like that.
Now, you're interested.
Most of the construction, traffic on the new stuff.
Was your implication at the first answer that the paperwork might take longer than the contractor getting mobilized, et cetera?
Say that again?
Paperwork, completing the paperwork with the IDOT might take longer than the contractor.
To mobilize and get ready to go.
To mobilize, yeah.
They are, they are ready to go. I mean, they are there right now, and they realize they've got some work in front of them, and like I said, every day we can save the, I would request we save it. Anything else?
Yeah, anything we can do to push the contract, you know, even, I mean, just overnight it if not, if nothing else.
Right. I mean, we plan on overnighting it to them and everything else, but I don't, I guess I don't know how long it takes us to sign it.
Fran, can you just run down and grab it? I can run down right after the meeting and get the document.
I can sign it tonight.
The mayor can sign it.
That would be fantastic.
Sure.
Okay.
Just hang out a little.
If they approve it.
And then get it out of here before noon tomorrow.
That's a done deal.
And then the other, the only other issue was that they were out there, they're, they've getting all the flagging and so forth, done all marking of utilities, and I was kind of assuming they were going to be starting this next, like, next week even at the modus, but I don't want to see those flags sitting there for three weeks or four weeks and no work going on.
There's some stuff that Muscatine Power Water's doing, still in advance of it. Could it possibly be for them? Actually, to be honest, we've been so absorbed with the airport the last.
Yeah, they, I was, I was told that the Langman requested the marking.
Okay.
So.
Then that tells you their intent.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they think in less than two weeks they're going to be out there.
So let's, let's, let's push this.
Yes. Push, push, push.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
While you're there, do you want to give us a quickie on the airport progress?
Matt started, started from paving today. So, we started at 6:30, and we didn't get any concrete on the grade till about 10:30. It was a little bit of a rough start, but they are gonna put in 3,000 linear feet of it before they go home tonight, so we may still be working come 10, 10:30. That's our best guess. But, and then we turn around and do the same thing tomorrow morning, and then we'll have a couple of days' rest and then do the same thing.
One, one.
Yeah, they're, they're doing it in four pieces, side by side. So they pull down one side, skip a piece, and pull back the other side. And then, as soon as you get maturity on those two where you can run on them, then you do the two that fill in the gap, but they started today. So, it's going along as good as can be expected for the first day of paving.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Alan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Motion is adopted with all ayes. 11D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed First Amendment to an option and lease agreement with Crown Castle Towers O5 LLC for the cell tower located at Greenway, I'm sorry, Greenwood Cemetery. The original agreement for a five-year period through October 14th, 2005, provided for four five-year extensions with the final extension expiring on October 14th, 2025. This amendment provides for six additional five-year extensions commencing October 15th, 2025, with the final extension expiring October 14th, 2055. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, June 16th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
Alan? Is there any discussion?
Greg, what kind of escalators do you have in there for?
3% escalator. This, this agreement's essentially the same as the other one council recently approved, except in addition, we have a one-time incentive payment upfront of five grand and $15,000 incentive payment as well. I think it was 15,000?
15%, there's a 15%.
Yeah, that was the additional item. Yeah, 15, one-time 15% increase in 2025, but the 5,000 upfront, and then we also get 15% of any other carriers that they place on the tower. Those are the three additional items.
If they add some more.
Do they maintain the yard? Do they maintain their area?
Yes, yes.
Their fenced-in area?
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Alan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11E. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with HBK Engineering for the Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Project. The amendment totaling $10,135 includes items that have been completed but were not included in the original professional services agreement. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second, your honor.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11F. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a memorandum of understanding for the 2016 Justice Assistance Grant Direct Award. The tentative grant amount is $19,613 and will be shared with the Muscatine County Drug Task Force as well as the Muscatine County Sheriff's Office. The grant award is used for equipment purchases not included in the current departmental, department budget. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor. Second, your honor.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the extension of an agreement with Lutheran Homes to operate and maintain the liquid sludge storage lagoon, public sanitary sewer, and to apply liquid sludge on agricultural land. The extension of this agreement will allow for an additional 15 years between the city and Lutheran Homes for bio solids lagoons, the bio solids distribution system, and bio solid distribution rights. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
Scott? Any discussion?
John? Do they have a treatment plan out there of some kind?
They used to.
They used to?
Yeah. They had a lagoon out there till about 1986 when we came out. It was failed. It was failing, the DNR. Either they had to make a new lagoon that worked, or they had to get hooked up. So, we hooked them up in exchange for 10 acres of land to put our lagoons on.
Is this the same 10 acres that we rent?
The same, what we, this that we're renting.
So we pay, we pay rent to it?
We, we will now, yes. We haven't before, but it was 30 years ago, they got a free connection. They figured that was long enough to go rent-free.
And then, in addition to that, we also disperse the bio solids.
Over the land.
Over the land as well. We have facilities underneath the ground out there to disperse it on those properties as well, rather than having to ship it or truck it to other locations.
This hooks onto your tractor that you're.
Yes.
Use as a drag, drag line.
The injection system for a drag line.
The used tractor?
The what?
Was it a used tractor?
The new tractor, yeah.
Was it used when you bought it?
The used tractor?
Was it used when you bought it?
Yeah.
It was.
No, it was, it was new.
It was new because it goes slower. It has to go slower than the other one so we can apply more.
New tractor. He wasn't at the last meeting.
Is all the land that is.
It was a year old.
Sludge is put on, is all Lutheran homeland?
No.
No.
Bio solids is the, is the new preferred term. I think sludge probably was pulled from the original contract to put in this language, but, so when you see the word sludge and bio solids, we tend to use bio solids now. Not, not just euphemistically, but sludge is, is also a term for industrial waste, and this is not that. This is a, this is a useful product, so we prefer the term bio solids.
I stand corrected.
No, not just, just to let, you know, that is an important distinction for me, but.
But anyway, it's more than just their land.
Yes, there is. There's, there's a lot more land that we do. We've actually included a new farmer who's, who's come back, who wanted to have their, the owner wanted their land to be included in that, so we've, we've actually been adding land out there.
John, this is off the subject, but how many acres do you?
Apply, apply? About 600 some or more a season. So there's at least double that because everybody rotates, so you're only applying to half the land every, every season. So, you only, you only apply on things where soybean has come out because the corn's the only thing that needs it. Soybeans don't need the nutrients for the land, so.
Is there any restriction on what the land can be used for that's, as far as crops or anything like that?
No, no restriction. There's a lot of, you know, we follow regulations about how much we can apply. There's an agronomic rate that we, that we have to go by that says you can only apply so much of this product to, to this land, and it matches exactly what those, what those fields will uptake, again, in nitrogen. So the nitrogen is, is, is used up, and we're not actually adding more to the, to the environment than runoff or anything like that.
Never been accused of increasing the nitrate level in the groundwater or anything like that?
No, like I say, we, we really apply the, the proper rate. We know what, what nitrogen levels we have in the solids before we apply, and, and we can tell the next season, you know, we go back and look at it, and that, and that's, that's, that's pretty much all been, it's been used up, you know? I mean, there's always naturally occurring, you know, things in, in the soil that we can't account for, but, but we've, we've surveyed some of the farmers that have used it, and they, they don't have to apply anymore. They, they actually, you know, they, they look and they, they check, believe me. You know, they're better at this than we are. They know exactly what they have on their lands and what they're going to need, and if they needed more, they'd be applying it, and they, they don't, so.
John, how far down does that tool go that injects it?
About eight inches.
Oh, I thought, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Six to eight inches generally.
And how many is the tractor pulling at one time?
Well, it's just one rack. It's on one big rack, and the hose has come out. I think there's eight, eight injections.
Just one tool in the ground?
No, there's multiple tools.
There's multiple tools.
It's got like, it's, they're like little teeth that go on, they're a little welded on there, and then the sludge comes out through.
Yeah.
Bio solids.
Bio solids.
Seen it from a distance.
Thanks, Phil. Appreciate that.
With the correct pH levels.
One hit.
One hit.
Stop doing it with horses.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help, John.
Sure.
Greg, the last extension, I mean, it was 15 years. What was the last one that we had?
This was the first, this is the second extent, this is the first extension of the contract.
Second.
Is it first or second?
2001 was the first extension.
Okay.
So this is 1986 is the original contract. We extended it in '01, and this is the second.
Basically, 15 years is common for what we're seeing. Well, common, this is not, I don't know if it's common activity, but this is the original deal when, when the city went out there and utilized the lagoon, so this is, I don't know that I'd call it a common activity. We got away from it for a period of time, the application, and we're using trucks to haul it to adjacent or area landowners for application. And we were able to move back to this process with several property owners. Did another contract, what, two, three years ago with a local landowner as well, who wanted to come back into the program as well. So we've been able to avoid having those extra costs for transportation.
Those are generally five-year contracts with the farm, with the other farmers around there. They, they liked five years. Lutheran Homes is good with 15. I prefer 15. I don't have to do this every five years that way, but some of them like five because something's going to change.
What do they?
I don't know what, I don't know what that would be, but.
What do they pay you, John?
What do they pay us? We don't, we don't charge for that at all.
Okay.
We're, we're a very unique situation.
Everybody wins.
We're kind of the envy of the, of the wastewater treatment industry because this is generally an enormous undertaking to get this stuff out and find fields that we can put it on and, and all that kind of stuff.
Like a cost avoidance.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And, you know, we could charge them, but the farmers would just say, "Well, I don't want it." Then what would you do? Be stuck with a couple million gallons of bio solids and.
So that's where I'm confused, then, so then why do, why do we pay Lutheran Homes, then?
This is their land.
So, but we can go to other farmers that possibly wouldn't charge us.
To put a, a lagoon?
They got their lagoons.
Ah, the lagoon. I understand. I thought you meant the actual.
These are the, these are the two, two enormous lagoons that sit on 10 acres of land that we store.
No beach.
Store and then pump from.
Then we pull it from there. Put it in the trucks, and then put it in that tank, and that's where you put it on the side of the tractor with the tank.
Right. That's what we're renting, is the land itself.
I assume Lutheran Homes decided if the lagoons weren't there, they could farm it and get some income that way, so we're just kind of making up the difference.
Correct. But we negotiated half the price that they would normally charge because the farmer is getting the benefit of that land, and they should be charging the farmer for that, so that's where we came down.
It's a win-win overall.
It seems to be. It's a good deal.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a contractual agreement between the city of Muscatine and Muscatine Community College for video production and cable cast services. This agreement will replace the existing 28E agreement and will be effective July 1st of 2016 through June 30th of 2019. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
Alan? Any discussion?
Your honor, on, on one of the footnotes of, of the attached document, it says that they have included a proposed equipment upgrade, going from high-def signal transmission and, and internet streaming broadcast options for residents. It says proposed. Are we voting on, on a proposed?
Not.
Upgrade or is something different?
Not at this time. We haven't discussed it. That was simply provided along with the contract, and I believe in his memo, he recommended that we look at that in the next year. The list is attached to the agenda item. There's 11,000-plus worth of upgrades that they're proposing, and we would bring that forward, just be able to discuss that with MCC and bring it forward at budget time if, if we chose to move forward.
Should we, at this time, be looking at, add an upgrade instead of waiting?
I'm just looking here at, at their recommendation was, I believe it was in that last paragraph, the, yes, the note. Prior to conclusion of the contractual period, it may be advisable to upgrade broadcast capabilities include high-definition signal transmission, internet streaming. So, they made the recommendation. We, we got it along with, with the letter. We haven't had an opportunity to evaluate it or have John take a look at it, so we're not ready to make any recommendations at this point in time, so we can certainly do that and share that with John and then bring it back for discussion.
Thank you.
Since, since they own all the equipment, would, would there be a cost to the city for the upgrade?
I don't believe they own all of the equipment. We, we paid for, we paid for some upgrades.
There was an inventory.
We paid for some upgrades two, three, three years ago. Right.
Okay.
Speaker upgrades, the equipment upgrades in the back as well. We've added some additional.
Because in the note, it, the agreement, it said something about all the, the listing of inventoried equipment was owned by, I thought it said, owned by MCC. So, and I was wondering why we would be paying for an upgrade in, on equipment that they own? But maybe they're got the old stuff, and if we want new stuff, we need to pay for the new stuff. for the new stuff.
We did pay for the upgrade about three years ago.
Yeah.
We budgeted, we budgeted for and paid for that upgrade.
It was like 18 grand or something, somewhere around there, yeah.
Let's say it needs the agreement of both parties, Dan.
The proposed upgrade is $11,649.
Yes.
I maintain, or at least would like to have the council look at the upgrade before we sign the contract.
Well, the upgrades are not, and the costs are not included in the contract, those are just simple recommendations, and we can have John take a look at that, those would be our expenses going forward.
Okay.
We'll bring that back for discussion. It's not included as part of the contract, it's simply a recommendation they provided along with the contract.
Be good with that, Bob?
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. Next, 11I, we're going to have a discussion of the mall TIF agreement, if he was going to be doing that.
Yes, I'll take that, Your Honor. You've got a brief summary, just looking for council consensus tonight. We talked a little bit about this at budget time, and we've had a couple brief updates on where we are. As you may recall, there's over $5 million counted against our debt limit with the, with the mall TIF agreement, when that was put in place a number of years ago, it did not have annual appropriation. We started doing annual appropriation a few years back, which allows us to only count the annual allocation against our debt limit. As you may recall, the mall was recently sold, and the, the current property owner requested that we consider rescinding the current TIF agreement. The parties are, have come to a, an agreement that we're recommending tonight to bring, to wrap up the current TIF agreement, bring forward a, a small TIF agreement on two adjacent parcels, which are currently covered under the mall TIF, we'll bring that forward as well. At some point in the future, there may be a recommendation regarding the mall, but there's nothing at this point in time. But if we did do anything in the future, of course, it would be annual appropriation as we do with all of our agreements, so we have a significant benefit to the city by being able to remove this from our annual, from the, our debt limit, and it's our recommendation that we move forward. Happy to answer any questions.
In the supporting documents, it mentioned that the sale took place without any discussion of the, the TIF agreement. What's the implication there?
It's, it's not your typical item for consideration in, in the sale of a, of a property. The TIF doesn't, unless it specifically states so, and most TIF agreements do not, does not reside with the, with the property, it resides with the, the individuals that are signatories to the agreement. When the property was sold, the TIF agreement stayed with the, with the preoriginal signers to, to the, to the TIF agreement.
The TIF does not go with the property typically?
Not unless, not unless it's specifically dealt with at the time of the sale.
That's what I was unclear of.
Right, doesn't go with the land, it goes with the owners.
Okay. And one of the previous owners owns this property up where the Sears store used to be, and that's the one that he would like to...
Correct. Yes, there's technically two parcels, and then he has a project that he'd be bringing forward, we'll have more detail on that coming forward, but it's just the very basic TIF, and it would expire prior actually to the, when the current mall TIF would expire, so...
The existing TIF that includes the mall, does that take action to rescind it, or since...
Yes.
It goes with the owners, and the owners, it just doesn't go away?
There will be an agreement coming forward for council approval on dissolution of the mall TIF agreement. Will be item number one. Item number two will be a, a TIF agreement for the two adjacent parcels, which are currently covered by the mall agreement, and those will be coming forward, I'm not sure exactly when at this point in time, the TIF agreement, but we'll also have to amend their renewal plan in order to account for any new TIF agreements, and we'll have to do that anyways with the, the housing TIF that was approved for, off of Colorado.
Oh, out there on the corner, Harrison, Harrison Heights or their lots.
Harrison Street Lots, yes. We'll be doing that anyway, so it'd be simple to include this as well.
What's their timing on that next session?
We'd like to bring the agreement forward as quickly as possible, we wanted to get council consensus tonight, if there's consensus, our legal counsel will draft up the, the document, have it reviewed by their attorneys, and, and we'll bring that forward for council action.
About in two weeks, or, or it'll take longer?
Council's pretty busy, but we'll certainly make every effort to do it as quickly as possible.
Do you just want consensus on this?
Yeah, if there's any objections, but otherwise, we'll, we'll bring it forward.
It's to the city's advantage, really, the...
Absolutely.
Majorly.
Seeing nothing on the horizon there.
Big time.
Yeah. I'm glad to have this done behind us.
Okay.
It's a win-win.
It's fine with me.
Fine with me. Borrowing limit, you know?
So, the consensus is yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have a question?
No, I'm good.
Oh, all right.
Sounds like there's a consensus. Move on to 14 on the agenda, communications from council members. Phil, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
No, I don't. Thank you, Mayor.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Alan?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Santos?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mike?
Nothing, Mayor.
Staff?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I just had one short thing in honor of Memorial Day that just passed this past Monday, and Flag Day, which began in 1916 on my grandfather's 18th birthday, June 14th. I would like to share some words written by Johnny Cash during a troubling political time for our country during the Watergate scandal. Our flag, as always, came through with flying colors, and I would just like to read to you Ragged Old Flag. I walked through a county courthouse square. On a park bench, an old man was sitting there. I said, "Your old courthouse is kind of run down," and he said, "Nah, it'll do for our little town." I said, "Your old flagpole has leaned a little bit, and that's a ragged old flag you got hanging on it." He said, "Have a seat," and I sat down. Is this the first time you've been to our little town? I said, "I think it is."